Like to call to order the study session of June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five at six P M. On the dot about that. Uh, council members, Beto and Cole are absent today. And per the rules, they did notify that they would not be in gave proper notice. Is there a motion to excuse council member Beto?
Make a motion to excuse council member potato.
Right, and uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second invite council member Bowman. All in favor?
I am.
Any abstain? Pass is unanimous. Is there a motion to excuse council member Cole?
I'll make a motion to excuse council member Cole.
Thank you, Greg. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Second by Pat. All of all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any abstain? Pass is unanimous. All right. We will move on down to study session business. First thing on the agenda is two thousand and twenty-five legislative recap. Uh, we have lobbyist Bill Clark here and communications director Carmen Palmer.
You realize we have two speakers. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Capitol. Uh, thank you for your time. Uh, we will try to go through quickly a high recap of the two thousand and twenty-five legislative session. See if I can click here. You.
Right the other way. It was working.
Like, huh, there we go. Uh, so as you recall, for those of you who have been through one of these before, I will kind of do a high level and then have Bill chime in. That work as usual shtick work.
Yeah.
All right, um. Less than a year ago, we were before you with the um, setting your legislative agenda for this session. This was a long session with the budget. We talked about anticipating a fire hose of bills um, and that happened. And then some, I was trying to think of what would follow the analogy and the best I could come up with was a waterfall and a giant waterfall. Um, so a lot of legislation introduced, not all of it passed, so just a little more of that later. Um, a lot of it did, um, actually what actually passed, not too bad of an impact on the city so far. Some of the things introduced, however, that did not pass yet, uh, has us quite concerned about loss of local control still. Um, I just wanted to point out, our country tends to want to divide things between the two wings. This actually isn't a wing challenge. This is a city versus state challenge. Um, Democrats tend to watch social issues, Republicans want to benefit businesses more, and both have efforts that impact cities. So I just want to acknowledge that. The other thing we noticed is, um, I called it watching the creep. Um, some of the bills that actually passed two sessions ago came back this session and changes were made. So this is a, a kind of a new thing I noticed. Um, but we want to watch this because a number of the bills that passed this session passed with details in them that made them not too bad of an impact on Sumner. What we're worried about is if this pattern continues and they go back to these bills now in future sessions and say, well, let's just remove this one little detail. Or change this one little detail, it goes from minimal minimally impacting Sumner to impacting us quite a lot. Um, the other thing I think we heard when we spoke with our legislators when we went down to Olympia is just the reminder, and Bill keeps drumming this to me, is not all cities are alike. So a lot of things in Sumner, we feel we are doing very well. Why does the state need to pass these laws that that impact what we're already doing really well? You do hear of other cities, unfortunately, that are not being so careful or not doing it very well. So unfortunately, as with many things, the laws are in response to the lowest common denominator. So that's just a good reminder that usually it's not in response to something Sumner's doing, but it might be in response to something other cities in Washington are doing. And we are kind of getting impacted um, adjacently. All right, so here were your, your three main topics this year, as with many years, uh, were these three, the improved public safety, reasonable funding and support for cities and enhanced transportation. So we'll dive into each one. Actually started with provide reasonable funding support for cities. This was not your first one on your agenda, but this is the one that got impacted the most this year. It seems like each session kind of takes a theme. This year, this category had the most impact. Um, as we have done before, red means the thing we were asking for didn't quite work out. Green means it worked out fine. Gray means we're not sure, kind of a middle ground. So um, nothing directly about liability. Um, as you know, our, the city's liability with our insurance has kept going up and up and up. Um, but nothing that concerns us. So actually, that one maybe should have been gray now that I'm looking at that. Um, adjust the one percent cap on city property tax, a little more about this later. Um, much discussed, a lot of erroneous information about it was tossed around in the legislature and in the media. Um, it did die with the focus on schools, which is kind of interesting for cities. Um, our CEO funding came out just fine in the budget. Um, Sumner's project is in the contingency. That means we're just below the ones that are funded, which means if one falls off, hopefully maybe ours can still pop in there. We're right below the line. Um, imbalance pressure on cities for things like PFOS, that's the, I can't pronounce the term, but that's the forever chemicals that are being found in our wastewater. Um, right now, we have to test our biosolids for PFOS, which is minimal impact. Again, it's that creep. If it keeps growing, um, that could start to impact uh, our work down at the wastewater treatment facility and our staff. And there are uh, some conflicts between state and federal. This was something, I don't know if you want to speak anymore on that.
On the PFOS issue?
Or on that state versus federal conflict.
Oh, yeah, I mean, one of the issues with PFOS and, and luckily, it's not impacted Sumner as much as it has, you know, places like uh, Lakewood, Dupont, areas around the base. Um, Issaquah, some mammoth habit from a fire testing facility that's on in the east side of King County. It's interesting because Department of Health, Department of Ecology at the state level want more stringent PFOS levels. At the federal level now, they want less stringent PFOS levels. And there's this kind of back and forth between EPA, State Department of Health and State Department of Ecology on what the ultimate regulatory limit will be. And so it's like, if you're in, if you're a, either a wastewater treatment system or a water system or a city that has PFOS, you're in a tough spot because you have to test. But you're not exactly sure what the ultimate regulatory limit is going to be. And you've already had situations where some jurisdictions in Washington State have spent, you know, twelve million, twenty million on PFOS treatment. Only to find out they may not have built that treatment plant to what the ultimate regulatory standard will be. And it's, I mean, this is a billion dollar national issue, probably a billion dollar issue in the state of Washington. It's a multi-billion dollar federal issue, so I'm not going to go away.
Okay, watching that.
Yeah. And hopefully avoiding it.
Right.
Yeah, to the extent you.
Um, we did have in there, you know, updating public records laws. Those are quite antiquated, just to, not to high transparency, but to avoid frivolous requests that are intended for personal gain, not for transparency. Um, a couple of bills were uh, that floated some updates were introduced but not passed. And then finally, um, the Public Works Trust Fund landed pretty well by the end of the session with the budget. Um, there were some initial proposals that had us terrified, that talked about taking pretty much all the funding, I believe. Um, the one thing we're watching is the way they balanced this was the diversion of funds was backfilled with state bonds. So that's just a little concerning, not for this budget, but for where this trend is going. Again, this Public Works Trust Fund is, we rely on this for things like having to um, replace the dryer at the treatment facility and getting those low interest rate. Loans, if we have to go out on the open market, that makes the project a lot more expensive, which means then that's a higher expense that gets passed on to all the utility rate payers. So, and in fact, we did share that particular example with a lot of our legislators that seemed to resonate well to have a very specific example. Anything on this before I continue?
Just that, you know, the kind of, the kind of fight over the Public Works Assistance Account money was not a surprise. You know, anytime the state legislature has a tough budget year. In the last twenty years or so, almost always they'll take some amount of the, you know, that account is funded by state real estate excise tax, the solid waste tax, the state utility tax, and then loan repayment. So the cash just keeps flowing in, really regardless of the economic cycle that we go through. So it's just a chunk of money in an account. And they can take that money in any budget cycle. It's not like the rainy day fund where you need a two-thirds vote, so it's just an amount of money that just keeps coming back into that account. And it's just a tempting target for the legislature to take. This year, they, they proposed to take it to pay for Department of Transportation's obligations under the U S D Washington Culvert's case, where there are all the fish blockages under state highways. Um, which again, has some appeal because the state really doesn't have a permanent way to pay for that funding obligation, which is now increased by about five billion dollars. So they're certainly looking for more revenue. But there was a really strong pushback, not just from cities, but from, you know, water districts, counties, public utility districts. It's one program in state government that actually works if you would just leave it alone, as Carmen is saying, because the money just keeps coming back in. Um, the concern is that what they ended up doing is there's cash in the account, they take the cash to fund the operating budget. And then they backfill the loss of that cash with state debt, right? So the thing that's tough is when the state issues debt, they issue debt and it costs the state five percent. They loan that money out, cities loan the money out, or how the state, you know, for the projects that get awarded. Then the interest rate paid by cities or water districts or others is like two percent, three percent. So they're loaning it out at a lower rate than they're charging the interest on, which from a fiscal standpoint is not the best way to manage your limited debt capacity. But taking that cash is that tempting in this kind of budget cycle we're in this year.
So that will probably be one thing we will want to keep our eye on in future agendas and sessions. Um, so anyway, I start, I uh, set this out with what passed and what's helpful or not helpful or unsure, and then going into what did not pass. So uh, in this category, these are the ones that passed. As Bill said, we're, we're all struggling with all the alphabet soup of all the numbers, I guess, if you can have it there, but um, you can, this helps look that up if you want to look up more. Um, we didn't get so much flexibility in using local REIT, that was very nice. Um, fourteen ninety-one did uh, have some concern for us. It's uh, transit oriented development limiting um, and really directing how cities will do development within um, a radius of a train station. Uh, within a quarter mile, that was actually an amendment that was proposed from Sumner through um, Representative Jacobson. Court, it used to be a half mile, which would be most of some, um, quarter mile fits our town center plan. Most of the things they were proposing are fairly similar to what we already had in the town center plan. We were more concerned if it was starting to go into what should be our residential neighborhoods, um, trying to put in, you know, higher density where Sumner does not have higher density. So we appreciate that quarter mile amendment. Um, that's one of those things we will keep watching if future bills try to just slide that out or change that back to a half mile. Um, there were some uh, updates to paid family medical leave, um, including concurrency with the federal program. Uh, this does help the city. One thing to note, though, it did uh, extend paid family medical leave. Uh, I believe it was from businesses that had fifty employees down to, I think, twenty and eventually eight. So just knowing some of our independent small businesses, this will be an impact to them. And then an updated DIG law with a new electronic platform. Um, that Public Works appreciates, uh, the increased fines could be good or, or bad. Um, kind of unsure middle of the road, that gray area. Um, there is a bill that affects our ability to regulate parking, but that was amended to apply only to populations greater than thirty thousand. That will not apply for a long time in Sumner, and that was a very funny one. Um, oh, I believe that was the one, there were many parking bills. But that was the one that, when I talked about the, it's not really a D or R thing, a lot of ours were actually jumping on that one because it was, they saw that as very pro-business, pro-development, pro-business. Um, we did provide some feedback that it's very pro-business unless you're putting in a two hundred unit apartment building right next to an independent coffee shop that will no longer have any on-street parking because you didn't allow us to require any parking of that new development. So just trying to balance, we understand the efforts, but trying to balance some of the realities we see on the ground here in Sumner. Um, and then a modification to the sales tax. Um, this is things like there's now a sales tax on things that previously were not taxed, such as digital advertising. Um, we will see a small revenue increase, but if we also use those services, we now have to pay the sales tax as well. So that one's kind of a wash. Anything on this one before?
No, just thematically, the point that Carmen made about, you know, some of these bills end up being compromises, many of them do. The transit-oriented development certainly was, the parking bill was, the DIG law was, paid family leave was. And what happens is whatever stakeholder or interest group is really driving the passage of that legislation will recognize, okay, we have to, you know, limit the parking bill only to cities above thirty thousand to get it passed, right? So that's what they'll do in two thousand and twenty-five. You know, then they kind of play possum for a couple of years and then they come back and say, well, now we'll change thirty thousand to ten thousand, right? And so a lot, that happens a lot where you get some statutory framework in place. Another good example of this, I think, will be the rent control bill that passed. Where, you know, whether the bill is going to pass or not is a doubt. You make some compromises and then you let it sit for a year or two and come back later. So that's why, even though these bills have passed, it's not as if these issues are done, because you got to just keep your eye on it throughout the years.
And that's a good point. I wanted to also make, uh, so many hills were introduced and so many bills were passed. We really focus on the ones that affect the city of Sumner, the government of Sumner. There are other bills that pass that won't be in tonight's presentation that greatly affect the residents, the businesses of Sumner. We just didn't want to be here all night. So I just want to point out that when we say city of Sumner, sometimes we try to provide feedback, like I said, with the parking to just, you know, I think I mentioned when we set the agenda. Sometimes the cities can see a broader impact better than the higher levels of government can. You know, they're, they're focused on one thing, we're going to increase housing, and this sounds like the great way to increase housing. And then we're the ones who have to come in and say, yeah, but that actually decreases over here, you know, the ability for climate change or whatever. Some of these issues start to work in opposition to each other. So we try to provide that feedback, but I did just want to clarify, you won't see in tonight's presentation some barely, very highly publicized bills. And it's not to minimize their impact to our residents and our businesses and the public, but it's not necessarily focused on city government. All right, um, or I told you this was the big one, past and impacts the cities. Um, lots of details. So this whole, you know, kind of getting into the weeds, they definitely love to do that this session. Um, parking across driveways, they now allow, which will require an update to our parking code. Again, some of these impacts are not huge, but they are impacts things that we have to, you know, check, change the code and bring that to you. Um, lot splitting pass, so we could see a high demand for that for infill. Um, there was a lot about reviewing our comp plan. Um, eleven thirty-five is only if our comp plan is out of compliance, so that should be fine for us. Uh, there were some updates to our building codes. Twelve seventeen is the one Bill just referenced, the housing stability rent control. Um, the city does not pay rent, but we will be curious what that passage, what that does to development of some of our multifamily projects that were coming. Uh, five five oh nine, uh, we must permit childcare centers in all zones but industrial. Um, one that did not get it really any publicity, five five seven one, uh, prohibits requiring or excluding exterior cladding material. So I believe that's siding to those of us not in the building industry, so we will have to amend our design guidelines. Um, one that did get a lot of publicity is the six cent gas tax. So, yeah.
Yeah, the only comment on some of these is you, just note the kind of level of detail or kind of micromanaging nature of some of these bills, right? Like getting down to the level of um, the types of siding that have to be allowed on house. Or like eleven eighty-three is a building code bill that has to allow an eight inch bump out of remodels of it. When you convert a non-residential structure, a commercial building to a residential building, it has to allow, I think it ended up being a thirty-six inch increase above the maximum height to allow for solar panels. And they're getting down to like really granular things that are really more typically reserved to the state building code council or cities. I think, I think the cycle of really detailed um, land use regulation and land use legislation is probably coming to a close. Be one because in, you know, Pierce, Kings, Snohomish, Kitsap counties and all of those cities. Um, the GMA update cycle has already taken place, so that you have the new comp plans, you have new development regulations being adopted. Um, the major kind of housing stuff, I think, has passed, right? And that's the TOD bill, the middle housing bill, the accessory dwelling unit bill, the parking bill, the historic landmarking bill, or a bunch of other ones, lots of letting was another. So all of those have now passed. I think people recognize that there's been a lot of churn in the kind of land used to, right? Got to give local governments and also the development community some time to figure out, okay, what is actually regulating housing in the city that I've either regulate or that I build in? So you can actually get housing built. You can't just keep this churn of like, of state law, which then triggers changes in, in local land use. So I think that cycle is coming to an end, I think.
What are cladding materials?
Uh, like siding, you know, like.
They can even tell you what kind of siding to put on your house?
It's more about that, um, they can't prohibit certain types of siding. There are some areas and it came, I know the history of the bill is interesting. It came out of some jurisdictions that weren't allowing certain types of siding. I'm forgetting the name brand, but it's a really common siding product. And the city didn't like that type of, of siding product. Because it just, it was kind of a, like the fiber cement, you know, kind of lap siding that people use for a lot of new construction. And it was like, it was Medina or Hunts Point or one of those communities, like, well, we don't like that, it looks cheap. And we're not going to allow people to use that kind of siding. And so some of the home builder communities came back, so wait a minute, this is like a standard type of siding that is allowed by the building code. Cities cannot prohibit that kind of siding, but it shows you the kind of level of granular stuff that they can get into. Yeah.
Thank you.
And there's more. Um, five five nine five establishes shared streets. It's allowed, not required. Um, that will be interesting for us. That's where uh, you, the bike lane, there's no separate bike lane, the bikes and the cars share the same roadway. Um, we are now required to provide pet sheltering in emergencies, which is an addition, but we also knew people, that's the number one um, hindrance to people moving into shelters if they need it, that they can't take their pets. So we already knew that was highly desired, if not, but now it's required. Um, there's some complexity added to responsible bidder criteria, but Public Works is not concerned, it's not a huge change. Um, also a little bit to subcontractor licensing, again, more complexity for the city, but not a huge change. Um, there's now a requirement for diaper changing stations and restrooms. And then the last one, um, is maybe the one that's the most impactful, uh, the state review of our housing element. Again, we just passed our comp plan, so this will be in ten years, but it's kind of weird. They did add as part of that compromise Bill was talking about, that now it's voluntary review request by cities and mandatory for underperforming cities up to ten cities per year. So hopefully, knock on wood, I don't foresee that being Sumner. But um, again, one of those ones where we're watching the creep, because I think when this was first introduced, all of our cop plan housing elements were going to the state for review, which
Yeah.
was a logistical issue for the state. There's a lot of cities producing a lot of cop plans. Um, also just kind of a theoretical concern for us, as you know, when we were doing the comp plan, there's lots of public hearings, lots of surveying, lots of input from the public. And just a little concern that someone at the state who may not even know where Sumner is, is getting to red pen that since they would like after all of that, uh, after we've worked together with the community to build our comp plan.
No comment.
All right. Uh, did not pass, but we expect again, um, as I said, a number of bills introduced. Uh, we did this two years ago. The nice thing about going from a long session to a short session is both a challenge and a benefit, is bills can return at where they left off in the long session. So some of these could come back and move quicker. Uh, on the other hand, we get a preview of what's coming. So this legislative agenda, you know, tonight, you're not get, just getting a recap of twenty-five, you're starting to build your twenty-six agenda. And uh, this gives us better foresight into what's coming, um, and be able to provide through your agenda feedback to the state on that. Um, fifty-seven twenty-nine would streamline the permitting process. Um, you know, which we like a streamlined permit process, but some of the details, again, how it's getting into the details of how the city operates, um, is just a little bit concerning. Um, I believe similar with fourteen thirty-eight, now they're starting to mess, mix up in my brain as well. Um, thirteen oh three would add an environmental justice component to CIPA. Um, again, this is another one where Bill mentioned, you know, the state and the feds are moving in opposite directions. There's the cities kind of stuck in the middle, so that'll be interesting. Um, and then there was a one that would introduce an exemption on the first hundred thousand of your primary residence property tax. Now remember, the cap for the city, unlike how it was reported, is not on a one percent cap on people's property tax bill, it's a one percent on what the city can collect. So while this would lower an individual's property tax bill, it wouldn't lower what the city collects, but it would shift the tax burden to business because suddenly residences would be exempt on their first hundred thousand, which would mean if we set this one percent rate, you know, total, more business rates would go up.
And this had some interplay with that issue because there was a real push to modify that one percent limit to three percent. This bill would have said, okay, yes, now the total property tax revenue for a jurisdiction can increase by three percent. But we're going to provide this homestead exemption to protect residential homeowners from the impact of property tax increase. But it has the effect of shifting it to the business community. So there was a lot of opposition to this. I think, I think one of your slide gets at it. I, I think the one to three percent issue is probably done for now, that debate is probably over for now, based on how it went this year.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we'll get a little, I believe I have a slide that gets a little bit more into that.
Yeah.
Um, these do concern us quite a bit. Um, there's talk of returning the homeless bill of rights. Um, A W C was quite vocal about, the issue with this is not that people don't want to help the homeless, but this bill is purposely crafted to be vague. The purpose of this bill is to drive litigation for cities. It is not, the first goal is not to help the homeless, is to increase litigation on cities, which is of course a cost and a burden. Um, one would require us to allow up to two dwelling units per lot. Um, requiring small businesses in residential zones. This one was interesting. Um, I think the, the theory behind it was little, you know, little markets and cute little cafes. The problem for cities is it did not upset, you know, imagine a bar right next to your house and anywhere in residential in Sumner. Um, the parking, the noise, just the, just the incompatibility, that is the very reason we have zoning, is to not have incompatible uses right next to each other. So again, this was an effort to increase businesses, and I think one thing was envisioned and cities see the way it was written, at least when it was introduced. A whole other thing happening with a whole mess of noise and uh, parking and access problems. Um, the next one, we require uh, permanent supportive housing in all residential zones. Um, and the interesting thing on this one was state enforcement precludes appeal to the hearings board. So, um, you know, this would be interesting. We already had some situations in Sumner where some forms of supportive housing were coming into our residential zone. And I know, you know, we were receiving emails that said, I can't believe the city can't do anything about this. So again, it's, it's the control thing, not the arguing the need for that. Um, payroll expense tax, this was floated as one of the ways to help with the budget. Um, the interesting thing is it did not exclude cities, so we would be paying the tax to the state for some of our um, salaries. Um, one that required us to uh, bargain the use of AI, um, not the impact of using AI, but the use of AI. Um, and it was a bill that was quite broad and did not seem to really understand how much AI is alive in our lives. So that one would be interesting. Um, and then we already talked about the public works count.
It's on these bills, I think all of these are live bills for next year. Carmen said, you know, if a bill doesn't pass in year one, it goes back to the house that it or where it originated in. So a Senate bill goes back to the Senate, House bill goes back to the House, to whatever the highest committee it made it to. So it's typically House or Senate rules. So any bill that made it out of their house of origin can start right there next year. Um, the one that I thought was close to passing was the one about two mobile dwelling units per lot. It was this idea that, you know, prohibiting cities from regulating mobile dwelling units, right? So you could have campers, trailers, mobile tiny homes, et cetera. As originally drafted, there was no limit, then it was limited to two only, and then it started to get into, well, how long is it? How long can it be there until it's not considered mobile anymore? What if, does it have to be there for no more than ninety days, hundred and eighty days? What about how do you connect it to the sewer, how do you connect it to water? Those kind of practical issues started to get quite, even then, fell apart, but I think this will be back. We'll be back next session.
All right, hey, we're out of that topic. That was the big one, um, not in importance, but in sheer volume.
Volume.
So uh, public safety, um, pretty much everything that was on our agenda did not pass. Um, and in fact, uh, we wanted to expand options for basic law enforcement academy. Remember, it takes a long time before we can, you know, once we hire an officer, I believe we're at fourteen months before they can hit the streets because of getting them through the academy. Um, so not only did that, nothing really arise from there, but they shifted twenty-five percent of the cost back to cities. So that's, that one went in the wrong direction.
I can add something on this, since this presentation was put together, the state Supreme Court released indigent defense standards, which are going to put in an increased burden on our ability to provide indigent defense. It used to be that a public defender could represent four hundred and twenty cases a year. Those numbers are going to gradually continue to go down, putting more pressure on a already very strained criminal justice system, not just on public defenders, but also on our prosecutors. Um, we've had some early conversations with our public defender. He's not sure he's going to be able to provide a service next year because of these changes. Um, which is a concern because we've had Um, which is a concern because we've had a very difficult time finding public defenders. That's not um. Yeah. What I've heard is there's so much public defense work out there. I tell you, graduating from law school in the state of Washington. If they were to go into public defense, there's not enough of them. So what this bill would have done is said, hey, instead of looking at this. On, you know, a national level, let's do a, a local study to determine what we need to do in our state to address indigent defense. And because I didn't pass, state Supreme Court ruled, hey, this is the path we're going down. There's not. You know, there's a little bit of grant funding that we can apply for to help us offset some of our costs. But we anticipate this is going to be an increasing cost for us and a challenge for us to meet over the next several years.
Okay, the one that did pass and got quite a bit of publicity um was House Bill twenty fifteen about helping cities recruit and retain officers. This is the hundred million. Um, when you look at it, yeah, it was a good intent. Um, however, it's a limited competitive grant. Um, so there are no guarantees, and as we always say, it's, you know, bad to spend one time money on a recurring thing, so that's already a limitation. So it does not fully fund the position, and there is an expiration date. Um, it also requires cities first to enact a sales tax increase for public safety. So basically, we have to go out and generate a tax, then we could get additional money from the state. So that's a little limiting. Um, it also includes a number of requirements on top of what we already do for accreditation. So um, and then the one that no one quite knows yet what that means is it requires officers to be hired from the community they serve. No one knows if that means a region actually within the city of Sumner. There's some other definition we're missing of community, so um. Interesting bill, probably not going to see, and as I already mentioned. Even if you can hire them, you still have that backlog with the basic law enforcement academy to get them through the academy and out the streets, so. The intent was there, but maybe the follow through, not quite so much.
Yeah, kind of an asterisk on it. I think that, you know, Governor Ferguson had a. One of his major objectives was a hundred million dollars for more law enforcement, and it's like. Yes, there is a hundred million probably once you total all this stuff up, including what cities have to raise themselves, but it kind of has an asterisk because it's grant based. It's not permanent, it might go away at some point. So it's like, on one hand, yeah, there is a hundred million more, but it's not. You know, as robust as it could have been, so.
Uh, again, this list that will probably be starting to form your twenty six agenda, things that did not pass, but we expect again and are concerned. The judges could dismiss misdemeanors without any input from prosecution. Um, that the attorney general would have increased ability to investigate local police departments. Um, that one actually stalled not from theory or because of the content, but purely due to funding. That this would require a lot more funding at the state level, and they were already having budget issues. Um, this one is, there's one that would pose barring police from stopping vehicles for a number of things that we stop vehicles for. Um, or it would require so much written justification that it would essentially be an end of traffic stops. Um, one that would change juvenile offenders to community placement rather than detention centers, one that would allow juvenile offenders to petition for early release at age twenty four. Um, and then one that would effectively eliminate firearm sentencing enhancements. So if you committed a crime with a firearm, currently there are enhancements in that sentencing, and those would go away. So we will be watching these. And then enhance transportation. Um. You know, our projects did not get funded in this round. Um, I mentioned. Council member Kenna emailed me a question about this, you know, as you know, with the. Six year transportation improvement project, we have a number of transportation projects we keep going out for grants for. Sometimes, um, you know, we try for the state as a funding source. We try to balance between some cities just send their, I swear their full six year transportation improvement plan every year, and it's this like large laundry list. We try not to do that, but we do try to send them the projects we think would spark their interest, even if we don't expect funding this year. But we do it because then they'll see it again as we keep bringing these projects back and back, and there is something to a little bit of careful repetition with, oh, yes, it's probably time to fund that project. The one that did get through ironically was Wash Dots that we were supporting. So they got theirs, but it's a good one. If you recall, um. They did do a broad plan for state route one, six, seven, and then it wasn't included in the budget. Originally to do the further implementation plan. The problem with that is plans do not have a good shelf life, so the longer you wait to um. Keep developing a very expensive plan, the more likely it is that you have to scrap that and start all over again back at square one. So um, for Sumner. Try to drive anywhere. It is nice to that they are moving forward with the broader um one, six, two implementation plan. Um, one to balance the good news, uh, one. Uh, good or bad news for people, you know, especially living on Val. S R one, six, two, the ordering highway, um. Uh, Wash Dot had a lot of plans for that interchange with roundabouts, and that has been delayed. That was part of their budget balancing was to push that one farther out into the future.
And just note to you, you may have heard about the gas tax increase. Gas tax increase was six cents, and then in a couple of years, it'll have a two percent kind of. CPI based increase over time, and that was done not to fund new or more projects, but just to deal with cost overruns. Of projects that were already underway. So typically, you know, in his, in the state's history, when there's a, you know, the nickel package or the dime package, and they were increasing the gas tax. What goes along with that is a whole new list of projects that will get built with that new funding. This year, the funding was necessary was to fund what had already been approved. So in some ways, it. Doesn't feel like it's a great transportation package because you're raising more tax money just to pay for what you've already decided to build, which is what they did this year.
All right, in transportation, that list of things that did not pass, but we expect again, um. Road usage charge, this is the way to tackle that, you know, with the increase of E Vs, the gas tax is not keeping up with what where they expected it to fund projects. Question, nobody knows the answer to is would that be in addition to the gas tax or would it replace the gas tax? So that one will be interesting. Um, one would require tribal representation when we're doing the transportation planning on our comprehensive plan. Um, one would modify our bid process, changing the city's ability to do much work. Um. This one just doesn't impact us very much, but Public Works would like to see. They said it was very vague, the way it's currently written. Uh, this one would be interesting. It would require us, you know, right now we're required to pay prevailing wage, but it's at the time we start the project and sign all the contracts. Fifty sixty one would change that to, you have to pay prevailing wage, whatever that wage is at the time the work is done. But you, you think of some of our large, large projects like the Stewart Road Bridge, that's a, you know, two, three year project, so trying to estimate upfront. What prevailing wage will be when the end of that project is being completed would be interesting. Um, there's also one that would, it's, it gets very into the weeds about invoicing and subcontractors being paid, and if they're not paid by the prime contractor, then the city could be on the hook for it. So this is uh quite complex and does increase the city's liability for paying fees if our contractor doesn't follow through.
Can I make a comment on that? So that one is very concerning to me because it begins to change the cash to cash conversion cycle of the money in and money out of the city. Where you could typically hang on to some of that cash for a bit, potentially, you know, make a few gains. Um, this one is very concerning to me. Typically, it's forty five to sixty days, sometimes ninety days on payment terms, so. It's uh, I, I see that as one that could impact. Especially small cities seriously, from a financial perspective.
Yeah, and I know the, the push and support of that bill is coming from. Very small contractors, small subcontractors, right? Not the Kiwits of the world and the big generals, but it was more the small subcontractors that are like, we need to be paid within thirty days. And they, they got a lot of sympathy, but there was a lot of pushback from. You know, even some of the bigger A G C members, the bigger general contractors, project owners, et cetera, for a lot of, for the reasons you described.
So it is the smaller, the smaller, but what it didn't, could the, so it says subcontractors, but depending on the extent of the project. That subcontractor could be a very large subcontractor with a lot of the stuff that's done.
Yeah.
You know, in our town, and so that's what I was looking at. I understand like the small mom and pop painter. I mean, I've got friends that own companies that because the primary contractor wasn't paid, they're not paying the subs, and it's like they're on a hundred and twenty, you know, they're on six months. I get that, but it could be concerning depending on the size of the subcontractor.
Carmen, Bill, can I ask you a quick question about the uh fifty five, fourteen, the tribal representation in transportation planning? My, my understanding is a couple of years ago, there was a bill passed that required engagement with tribes in comp plans generally. And is this specific to the transportation element of a cop plan that now there's. Um, representation on like the planning committees and, and things like that, or can you describe that one a little bit more?
I believe so. Honestly, this is one I do not have a whole lot of detail on. Um.
I know the, the prior bill that passed was a bill that um. Created this consultation process for tribes to work with their local governments in the complaint process generally, but it was kind of an opt in kind of process. If you wanted to engage in that type of consultation with your tribe, you could. This one required tribes to be a part of the transportation planning process within, so it wasn't an optional opt in kind of thing. It was a mandatory kind of process. The details of it, I can't exactly recall, but that was the difference between the bill that passed on kind of tribal consultation within G M A, which was, I think, two or three years ago.
Okay, that'd be interesting to see how that develops because. Um, I think it'd be, uh, on the face of it, it sounds like a great thing to in, involve tribes more. Um, I wonder if they have the bandwidth to uh, uh, on a. In a compliance way that you're talking about to all of a sudden be responsible to be a part of committees, boards, whatever it is on a comp plan and the transportation element, so um. Yeah.
And I believe that was one of the concerns is what happens at the city level if you don't hear back, then if you. Are you just stuck? So.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Uh, and this is kind of another category. I'll go through this quick, and this is again setting up the future. Um. This is that promise for a little bit more detail about the one percent cap. As Bill said, this was quite a robust conversation, and it didn't happen, so we're probably figuring the one percent cap is here to stay on, on quite a long time. Um, you know, again, there was a lot of, if you were listening to pretty much any news, you know, a lot of people were talking about your bill will go up three hundred percent, your bill will go up. You know, so it really got missed that cities are capped at one percent revenue, not people's bills, and. That just gets challenging when, you know, C P I and inflation is not one percent. Cities are always working from a deficit. Yeah, and as I mentioned, there was the compromise on this one. It didn't pass is there was some relief provided for school districts. So it was interesting that, you know, state schools, pretty much a lot of other jurisdictions are getting funding on the backs of cities. There was a lot of talk about funding capacity, voters' capacity to pay taxes and owners' capacity to pay taxes, which we understand. But uh, if you look at, you know, your current bill in Sumner, Sumner, city of Sumner is a very, very small part of that, and we are going to remain that way, it seems, for the foreseeable future. Um, one other thing that kept toss getting, getting tossed around, so I just want to clarify. One of the points made against raising the one percent cap was, well, they can go to the vote, you know, they can vote to increase it, so um, you know, all they have to do is do that. Problem with that is it is expensive to put something on the ballot, so it was kind of interesting to hear the people who were very. Into fiscal responsibility, basically telling cities they had to spend money in order to get money back. That's not the best long term for the city. Uh, and things that were happening, especially at the state level, as a lot of people have been talking, is the taxing capacity keeps getting eaten away, so. Um, people have a lot less ability to pay any more. For us, um, that does mean things like. Little teaser for the next item, uh, other revenue sources we already have available to us, like a transportation benefit district, public safety funding. Those will probably now need to come into play even more because there, there will be no relief on that revenue cap. Um. Also, maybe doing a few off session meetings, there was such rhetoric during the session, just at least getting some locals to understand what the one percent cap does. It is interesting how misunderstood property tax is just so difficult to understand. So it is understandable how misunderstood it is out in the, in the public. Um, and then when it comes to budget, there will be some difficult decisions. Nothing else on that. Wonderful. We do want to, uh, you know, end with thank yous. As always, um, our legislators in the twenty fifth and the thirty first, um, were quite responsive to us. Um, I know a few of you went down and spent the day with us and Bill, uh, meeting with each and every one of them, um, which is always really nice, so. You know, thank you to them. Uh, I grouped in the twenty fifth legislators, but you know, also to Senator Gildon and Representative Keaton. Um, we are very lucky to have six responsive legislators, um, both thirty first, which represents most of Sumner. Uh, the twenty fifth used to just be our neighbors. Now they do represent the cemetery, so we do have a little piece of the twenty fifth. Um, so we just did want to thank them for all their hard work. It was a long and uh difficult session. Looking forward again to twenty six, this is the short session, so we will be focusing on the bills that were already introduced in twenty twenty five. There is some talk of a special session. I don't know if you want to talk.
There's been some discussion, depending on what happens with um kind of revenue forecast projections, the state does revenue forecasts four times a year. And the trend line is not great, and so that combined with whatever happens with cuts at the federal level, like if. If the federal legislation goes through and impacts supplemental nutrition assistance or Medicaid. The state may see the need to respond to that. That would drive a special session, so we'll, we'll see about that.
We've already touched on the next thing, you know, just in general, federal and state are going in opposite directions, and there's cities in the middle. Uh, and then shifting seats at this one.
Yeah, it's interesting, like even though this is kind of an off year election wise. There are actually three very closely contested state senate elections, and what was interesting this year in the, in the legislature was typically the last decade or so, the House. Was fairly progressive as a body politically, the Senate was fairly moderate. That kind of shifted this year because of changes in who is in the state senate. If those three state senate seats, which were all based on appointments, if those swing back more toward the middle, then it makes the Senate more of the moderate body again. So we'll see, even though it's an off election year, those, and those are going to be, you know, I mean, multi, multi million dollar races, like. The amount that people will spend for a state senate seat is insane, uh, but they will, so, so keep your eye on that, yeah. And also too, on a, on any of the twenty six stuff, we blasted through a lot of bills and stuff and bill numbers. If you have specific questions about them. If you feel free to email me, or even like thematically, like you look at the criminal justice and public safety areas. You've got four bills that are going in this direction, and you've got five bills going in this direction, and clearly there's not. A meeting of the minds in Olympia as to what do we need to do to improve either actual results for public safety. Or public safety funding, different ideas from different legislators, even within the same party. It's not just the D versus R thing, but if you have more detailed questions, just feel free to check in with me on it.
It was interesting. We first got, I think, I lined up all the bills that were mentioned, and it was like six pages, single spaced. I did not want to be here with you, you know, serving a midnight snack because we're going into each one, so yes. Trying to pare it down to the, the main ones. Um, just a reminder, uh, having an agenda, the importance of an agenda. Let's uh, the public and our partners, different jurisdictions and neighboring and people like A W C, uh, WASPIC, uh, know where the city's position is on topics. Um, also reminds the public that the city and the state are not the same thing. You just keep reminding that over and over. Um, encouraging individual voices to step up with micromanaging the level of detail they're talking about. These are things people care about. This is land use zoning of their neighborhood. That means they do have to speak up at the state level. And we will come back in the fall and start distilling this into an agenda that gives the mayor and staff permission to comment on fast moving topics. You would then set the policy in your, with your agenda to give us the ability to comment fast as things move through a session. And it's all I have, unless there are any other questions or comments.
Any questions?
Just a quick one on the gas tax. Is that taking effect July one of this year?
Uh, yes, it is.
The six cents, right? All right, that's what I thought. Thank you.
This will be long on June thirty.
Get it, get it while you can.
Fill up your tank. Anybody else down there, you know?
Uh, I'll just say that was very impressive to condense all of that into really just a handful of slides, but I mean, and there's more. Yeah, you didn't share with us, so um, thank you guys for the work that you did over the session, and um, you deserve a break with a short session. And hopefully no special session coming, so.
We'll see, yeah.
Cross your fingers.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill.
Great.
For all your help.
This one thing, I think I did get a, a question from a. Local individual who was asking, because I mentioned some of the issues they were talking about were state level issues, and they were like, can you give us some information? Of how we can get involved in um, in advocating for those issues, and so I, if you guys have any. Feedback on how to do that, because I think I'm trying to figure out how to encourage folks in the community if they are wanting to deal with something that city can't fix. So I'd love to hear um, something follow up on that if we have a chance.
Okay, yeah.
Yep.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Great, thank you, good to see you.
Thanks, Phil.
All right, so moving down to transportation benefit district update, city administrator Jason Wilson. And Carmen Chase.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, Ms. Palmer's gonna pull up the presentation. Uh, really, the purpose of tonight's presentation is just to remind council about our previous discussions regarding a transportation benefit district. And set forth the the next steps to creating and funding transportation benefit districts, so I'll turn it over to Carmen.
Set the clicker down right next to the other one, so I gotta check which one's working again. All right, I will not repeat. I was here in front of you in March, feels like yesterday and a long time ago, both at the same time. So I will not repeat everything. This is a refresher as we start to move into actually the process for this, so. Just wanted to bring this back to front of mind. Um, the recommendation is we do look at forming a transportation benefit district for all of Sumner. There is an option to form for part of a city, but that just is very complicated and not very practical, so we do recommend it follows the city limits. Um, you had a number of options the state gives you. The most of you were most interested in the point one percent sales tax option that you can do with a council vote. Um, a lot of the cities around us have gone for the um car tab fee, but that just seems like the political third rail. And so I did not see any interest in following that one. The point one percent would generate eight hundred to eight hundred and fifty thousand per year. Um, that is exclusively for transportation, construction and maintenance, and then it would be renewable after ten years. I will say, it was uh working the booth, um, being at the city booth at Rhubarb Days this weekend. A couple of people, I think the most we heard other than. Where's the restrooms? Where's the rhubarb pie? What's the construction behind you? Because we're right at the tip of Heritage Park. The next thing we heard is, when are you fixing Washington Street? When are you upgrading the roads? When are you maintaining the roads better? And in fact, one gentleman came up to me, he's like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit you kind of hard. He's like, when are you working more on roads? And I said, you know what? Tomorrow, that's coming before council, so when has government ever said we're getting on that tomorrow? So he was quite happy to hear it, but it was good to hear that feedback right before this topic was coming before you. And he got more of the spiel about, you know, how hard it is to find funding to maintain roads. So again, this would be a stable source of funding. Um, we all know it's important to maintain our roads, but right now that's in the mix with so many other priorities. Also, it's very difficult to fund maintenance of residential roads, things like grants. Don't really apply to A, maintenance, or B, residential roads. They really only apply to things like the interchanges or wooden main or some of those main arterials. This graph uh you saw before but really resonated with you, and this is the graph we're sharing a lot with the public as well, it is. Much cheaper in the long run to maintain your roads rather than let them deteriorate down into the red and have to. Completely rebuild them, which is where we are with Washington. The other piece of this is it impacts people a lot less. They want good roads, but construction is not always very popular, so. Maintaining a road is a lot less impact on the neighboring homes and businesses than completely rebuilding a road. And finally, just for comparison, most of the cities around us already have a transportation benefit district. This shows you, uh, again, we were only recommending the point one percent property tax, uh, sales tax, excuse me. Sales tax raise, so this shows you what that would do for Sumner in comparison with their neighbors around us. Uh, we're still, we're not the lowest anymore, but we are still one of the lowest. The ones in the darker gray are much lower because they are outside the RTA. So that one, we have no authority over, it does affect your sales tax rate. What this graph doesn't show you is again, most of our neighbors also have enacted the car tab fee, which just was not worth it for us. Uh, this has been up on Sumner connects, um, pretty low concern or access, which is both good and bad. Um, I went and have a board at the open house, I spoke with a few people and once we explained why, and once I explained why, they kind of went, okay. So um, you know, no huge concerns or red flags. Um, more is coming up, this will be in the print newsletter and the e-news coming up as you move through the process. Speaking of, so that's what's coming next. There is a three-part process in this, um, so tonight is just the reminder and the check-in, see if anything has changed since March. With what you would like to see, then the way the process is laid out by the state. Is that you form the transportation benefit districts, that's just declaring the district. Um, and you'll see the steps in that involves a public hearing. Then you assume control of the district. That just makes life a lot easier for you, the public and our staff. Um, it means there's no separate board, no separate meetings, the council meeting. Assumes the leadership of the district as well. Funny enough, that he was kind of the procedural step, but that one has the most, requires the most notice and hearing and uh ordinance. Uh, and then finally, then you enact an ordinance funding the transportation benefit district, so that's where you would. Say declare it's the point one percent sales tax. Anything I missed or anything?
Any questions on that?
So September second, if we do this and it goes through and it'll start raining, or one twenty-six.
Carmen, in terms of um, kind of absorbing control over the TBD as the council, um, what does that? Procedurally look like, what role do we play? In managing the TBD going forward?
I read it. Now I'm trying to remember it accurately. I believe it means on a council meeting once a year, you have an item.
Yeah, just means that you approve the allocation of the use of those funds. That's it. It sounds, the way if you wasn't the council, you could set up. A separate board of representative, you know, people that represent your community to make a funding recommendation.
And I know Puyallup did not take this step, um, their their feedback to us is they wish they had. Their council is the board, but they literally have to gavel close their council meeting, pause, and then gavel open their TBD meeting. And it's just clunky, it's, you know, for the. Public to follow what you're doing, you know, the online and all of that, so they their recommendation highly was to assume the control and flow it through the council meeting.
Anybody else?
Can I just verify something? So that eight hundred, eight fifty is just gonna go in whatever the street maintenance fund type. Or is it gonna be specific things, or is we the council can say, well, I want some Dunder Ryan or Deborah Willow? But it's basically just gonna go towards the six-year street maintenance fund, right? I would assume projects.
Well, we have a number of of projects that are unfunded in our street maintenance, so we'll be coming to you with a budget amendment. And get this many much dollars, this is what you can do with it, these are your options.
And then we would vote on those or make a decision as a council, okay, thanks.
And I would, just to set expectations, I would anticipate that we would not allocate funds. Until we get a few quarters in and verify that we're getting what we think that uh we would be getting. Because it's sales taxes, it's volatile, so I'd anticipate that we'd be coming to you. Um, as part of the budget process for twenty-seven, twenty-eight, so kind of letting the funds build for a little bit, which never hurts to get some funds.
Would, would it go through the personnel and finance committee at all?
Uh, well, all budget amendments typically go through the finance personnel committee, this would probably also go through public works. Or we might look at it and say, you know what, this is something we just need to bring into a study session.
Thanks.
Yeah, uh Carmen, I'm, you mentioned this was gonna go out in the newsletter, um, coming out soon. And I wondered, I tried to place myself, you know, in the in the seat of somebody, um, who's getting that newsletter and thinking, oh, they're raising taxes again. And shaking their fists about it, and I'm wondering how, uh, did you plan on kind of providing examples or? Something to say like, if this were to move forward, we could do these types of things, you could see improvements in this way. Because I think, you you know, I'll I'll trust your judgment, you've been doing this for much longer, you're communications expert. Um, but I imagine it's the it's the sales part of the job to say, here's what you get. This, you might not love this, but the streets near near you are going to be easier to travel on, less congestion, whatever that is. So is that a pa- part of our messaging?
Yes, I think I'm I'm paraphrasing here, I can't remember it word for word, um, I did already draft it, but you know, that. Road maintenance, not only, you know, it's something like our booth at Rhubarb Days, but in that priorities, budget priority survey we did a year ago. Road maintenance was one of the top things people asked us to do. We know we don't currently have the funding to do it well. So I kind of started with that and said, you know, we listen to you, here are the challenges with funding that, here's one of the solutions. Um, I did acknowledge that, you know, none of us staff or council or mayor look at raising taxes lightly. Um, but with this amount, it would, you know, change things and we felt worth it. There are opportunities to comment if people don't agree with us through this process, uh, and then I did include that graph. This seemed to be the one that resonated the most with you and the people at the open house, so this was the graph I was including. Plus then the link is the newsletter provides the link to go get more information for all stories, then this would go to the Sumner connects page with all the details. And probably more than anyone would ever want.
Right, yeah, that's great, I think it's it's uh. Tying it into, it's not just a Sumner issue, this is a state issue, a a national issue, just preserving and maintaining what we already have. I think, you know, going back to legislative session. Legislators, representatives, senators, they love new projects, something shiny and new, they can say, hey, I did this, but the old stuff that's failing, you know, the potholes or whatever it is. That's not so interesting, it might not get them the votes, so. Um, I I really like, you know, the the way you're talking about it, because I think we got to say, hey, these are some of the ho-hum things that we have to do, but we just. Costs are exploding across the state, across the country, and this is the way to keep up with that, so.
I do have a comment, but. I'm a little hesitant, but I'm gonna go ahead and put it out there considering it's a study session, so I think this is a really critical topic. Um, as we know, there potentially could be new people sitting up here. And so I'm looking at the timing of it, which I think is. And it goes to Matt's point of having uh that really settled story, for lack of other words. Because some of us up here, this has been going on, you know, the whole time we've been here, so we understand the history and we understand the why it has to happen. Um, and to his point, you are so good at what you do, that however, we can help if you would want to provide speaker notes. As this goes forward, so when we're out in the community, it's not just a topic of. Uh, we're just, you know, raising taxes because that's what everybody likes to do, because I always remind people, I live here too. And so if we're sitting up here making these decisions, there must be a a true need. So I think it would be um helpful and healthy if we had some speaker notes once you get this done. So we're all on the same page, we can choose to use them or not, but it would be nice if we did and kind of came forward in a joined effort. As to the why it's necessary.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
We'll also commit to when we're doing our public hearings, make sure the presentations. Our presentations are built around education on the entirety of the topic, not just on what we're voting on.
Right, great, thanks.
Make sure we hit the why.
Yeah, great.
I just want to specify, yeah, the print newsletter does take some time to get out there, so it will land after that first public hearing, but it will land before some of the subsequent steps. So people will still have the opportunity to provide.
Okay.
All right.
All right, we will be moving on to resolution number seventeen twenty-four donation acceptance. And I call on community services manager Derek Berry.
Good evening, thanks for having me. So I'll give a little background. On the donation for you tonight. The Ray Foundation is the treadable arm of the Seattle Sounders FC. Um, they get their name from the the brand color of rave green for the Sounders. So it kind of makes sense with the name, it just sounds more funny. One of their main missions is uh to build small fields for free play. Uh, use soccer as a vehicle to inspire youth and strengthen communities. They've taken this World Cup that's coming in twenty twenty-six to create the twenty-six by twenty twenty-six initiative. Actually able to complete that last September, so they've done a fundraising to do another twenty-six fields. We began communicating with them in twenty twenty-two, July of twenty twenty-two. To see if we'd be a good fit. Reaching out to Ashley Fosberg, who's the CEO now of Ray Foundation. She did a site visit down to Sevigny Dollar, we ended up going over to Daffodil Valley and the sports complex. Through some complications with logistics, the district, it is now back in our court for Sevigny Dollar Park, so. That's a huge win for our community, it's open whenever our parks are open. Um, so what they're looking at doing is creating a foot salt court, which is basically a mini soccer field. So the new map, uh, the map you see before you, um, we're removing the basketball hoop on the north end. Uh, to have it be an exclusive foot salt court, the south end basketball court would stay. And what you're seeing up there in the blue is kind of like the goal build-out area, the six-yard box is what they call it in soccer. Um, the green boxes on the outside of it, our pads or crews are pouring, so that the goals will sit on top of that as well. Maybe resurfacing the entire court. And adding fencing, so you can kind of see the brackets around the north end of of it with the black lines going into it. That's to help with uh balls being deflected, and then because of the size of it. Uh, they wanted to add a third goal for kids to practice on, so that's on the uh bottom left of the picture. We chose not to have one on the right because of the pump station there, and we didn't need soccer balls going into the enclosed area. So, um. In working with them, they're excited being Sumner, they did build a relationship with that Daffodil Valley and the students there. So they were thrilled to see that Sevigny Dollar would still be serving to those kids. With your acceptance of the donation, you'd be seen again July seventh at the council meeting as new business and. Be thrilled to share more information at that time, we are looking at a all Sumner soccer celebration, August twenty-second, from one to four thirty. Uh, that's in the resolution as well. It's basically a big party. Uh, they bring soccer balls for all of the kids, they get to keep them, food, water, drinks, uh, food trucks, um, music. And some programming with typically it's Sounders alumni, it could be current players, uh, I don't know if any of the Seattle Rain players will be coming, but there's possibility of that as well. So, um. I've been geeking out about it, that we finally are are landing this, uh, be happy to answer any questions you might have on it. Um, we do have several other pictures, in case you want to see more realistic picture, this was me playing in publisher earlier today. Well, this first one is uh at Chief Leshire School in Puyallup. Um, these courts are throughout the entire state, there's some in Spokane, Spokane Valley, Pasco. All up and down the Peterson region, several cities have multiple of these. Basically, in the in Peterson, you can guess they have one, we were lucky enough to get one. So like I said, this one's at Chief Leshire School, brand new school for the most part, um, our fencing won't go up as high as that around the court. On the east and west side, it'll be six to seven feet, and the short courts are on the, the short ones that go into the quarter about four feet high, about ten feet in. Uh, next picture, Carmen. So this is, these are the soccer balls they bring to give out to kids. I know when it's with districts, they typically give it to every student in the school. Um, other times they've brought up to four hundred, I think, soccer balls, I don't know what the number is they'd be bringing, um, but. Pretty exciting stuff, they do programming with kids, uh, next picture. Um, it's been very, very popular, I think this one was in federal way. Just kind of showing one of the get-togethers, I think this was a a school in federal way, and then last picture is just. More images of what it truly looks like, so they are. Painting resurfacing our court at Sevigny Dollar, and the surfacing company came out, they were thrilled with how good the condition was of the concrete there. So they said it'll be a pretty simple, fast job there, and then the fencing contractors through rave as well. Any questions?
Yes. Go ahead. Um, so. The court, is it a a regulation-sized soccer field, so it's for small kids? And so, um. Like I have grandkids that play soccer and it's on a much smaller scale.
Yeah.
So it'd be something similar to this, so is this used specifically by the school, is it used by just kids out in the community? Is it something that some of these little soccer leagues can rent? What's the, how's it used?
Those are your questions, so I'll start with the. The leagues, they cannot rent it, this is open for the public to use at all times, that's one of their stipulations. Is that they don't want this to go to clubs where it's um not as inviting. Foot salt itself is a smaller scaled indoor soccer, it's typically indoors, it's with a ball that doesn't bounce as easily. And so it's more of a fast-paced footwork and quick decision-making. Uh, it'll be pretty well-used, I've seen these in other locations, uh, C-TAC has one by one of their parks, my daughter's playing. Soccer, and they actually had one right next to the field and there were a bunch of kids playing on it while they were watching another soccer game going on, so. Lot of informal use, and then you might start seeing neighborhood kids coming out there playing three-on-three or four-on-four, foot salt itself is usually five-on-five. Our court is a little bit smaller, that's why we did those little wings on the outside to put the goals, just to add more length to it. So, yeah, open and available to the public.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, did I answer all those? Hopefully.
Yeah, and I, you know, I would begin to wonder, and hopefully that it would be the neighborhood kids using it. There's a pretty large contingent of folks that play soccer down here in our area, and they use some of the fields, and I've had some people, then they meet at the parks, and some people complain that they're meeting at the parks, and it's like, just leave them alone, they're here, that's what parks are for, right? So that's what I was trying to understand, was if there were any, uh, rules or limitations, you know, I could see a beginning soccer team, maybe a coach, taking kids there and, and getting them to play this game, so that they become accustomed, right? So as long as somebody in the neighborhood can do that, I think it's great.
Yeah, absolutely. They just don't want it reserved.
Right, got it.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Kenan.
Yeah, uh, Derek, uh, I'm also very excited about this. I remember hearing about this a couple of years ago, and, um, yeah, when I was looking at the agenda, I was like, oh, it moved from um, the comp, the sports complex over here, which, um, it seems like it's a, it's a good location for it. So, um, just a couple of questions for you. So confirming that the basketball court, there's still usage of that, that one half of it, but the other half of it would be for, now for the soccer court?
Yeah, and I've, I don't know if I've ever seen a full-court game at Seaventhaller. You might see two groups playing on their own half. Um, typically it's a group playing on half of the court.
Yeah, I was curious about the usage of, of that basketball court, but.
We chose to do soccer on the north, so no errant balls went into the road.
Yeah.
Another thing we're looking at doing is actually adding fencing between the sidewalk and the basketball hoop, so the balls don't bounce out that way. We did a, a resident reach out about that.
Okay, um, and there, uh, there's no impact to the rest of the park in terms of like, I know there's the, kind of the dog, the fenced-in dog area. Uh, that's not affected by this or, or anything else. Okay. Um, uh, this is, might be a sensitive question for you, Derek, because I know you're a pickleball fan. But I am a little bit, um, I'm looking at this, I'm thinking, I know at the sports complex, a lot of folks go and, you know, use the tennis courts for pickleball. That's great. We've got the one at Loyalty as well, um, at Rainier View. Um, I'm wondering if there's gonna be some conflicts with folks wanting to use it for soccer, but also some folks seeing it as a pickleball, um, retreat as well, and if I, you know, again, public park, kid, people are gonna do what they're gonna do, but
Yeah, I have no plans on, on a train and chase lining that for pickleball.
Okay. Yeah, okay, um, I just had to, had to ask that one. And last thing, um, there's no lighting, um, at these courts or anything, and, and there would be no plan to do that. And, okay.
We had money?
Okay.
But I will, I will throw this out there, pickleball players are sometimes rote, and they might come out there with their own little painter's tape.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I wouldn't be surprised, but, uh, they definitely don't have the priority here.
Yeah. Um, last thing, may, maybe, uh, you know, since this is a tie-in to the World Cup next year, maybe there's some things we can do, little events or something like that. Um, don't know if you can do a watch party or anything like that there, but just anything that we can do to, uh, continue that linkage, or Sounders, like once, um, once this is built, and i- is there any other, uh, relationship or partnership going forward with the courts and events and things like that?
That's a really good question, so, um, the reason they looked at going to the sports complex in Daffodil Valley is because they like doing ongoing programming. We don't offer recreation through the city, so that was a thing that they were like, hey, this is important to us. When, um, this opportunity popped up to go back to Seaventhaller, they said, yes, absolutely. In the resolution, I believe it briefly goes into it, that they could come back and do programming. They do like to come back. I wouldn't be surprised if they tried to do something at their different fields to support the World Cup.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'll also add that, uh, the second study session in August, you're scheduled to get an update on our strategic tourism plan, which also includes what we're doing to partner with our regional, um, tourism groups on the World Cup, so.
Great.
Anybody else?
Mayor, I could just add, wait, Derek. You know, I, I just gotta congratulate Derek. This has been something that he's been working on a very, very long time and, and pushing, and we've heard a lot about it for years, and um, when this opportunity came back to us about thirty days ago, Derek has put in an incredible amount of work to get this over the finish line, to get this built this summer and open in August, so congratulations, thank you very much.
Thank you, Derek. All right. Well, it takes care of that. City administrator, do we have a report tonight?
Very short. Just a reminder, we have five Mondays in June, which means no meeting next week. Our next regular council meeting will be on the seventh. Thank you.
Okay, that's a great, great announcement. All right, agenda setting, any council meeting? Go ahead, Pat.
Thank you, uh, the July first Public Works Committee meeting is rescheduled for Tuesday, July fifteenth at the same time, and that's with the, uh, the JAC, which is Joint Advisory Committee between Sumner and Bonnington.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any agenda issues? None, all right?
There, I'll just point out, there's no community development meeting this week.
No what?
Community development.
All right, and any council committee meeting issues? Seeing none, all right? With all of that, Jason, did you have anything else? All right, I will adjourn this meeting at seven sixteen.